Have no in-person audience members. Open for agenda items, any changes to the agenda? If you want to point out that we have our announcement section later on in the agenda, which is different than usual.
I have one quick proposed addition, if you would like, to the other business, which is that the City Managers Advisory Group on the Transportation Climate Action Implementation Plan is seeking a member from the Planning Commission, if you're ready to appoint somebody tonight. So the first of the three implementation plans is getting going, that's transportation. City Manager has set up an advisory group and she is seeking a member from the Planning Commission to serve on that advisory group to her. So if you're ready tonight, that'd be great because they can get started a little bit sooner. If you're not ready tonight, we can do it as a formal item on your next agenda.
Jessica, I decided to give my ticket away, so I will stay this evening until the bitter end.
Okay, um, okay, then are you, are you willing to put this item under other business? The Transportation Climate Action Plan. I think we just need to gem some nodding to add something to general business. Okay, so we will add that item to other business. And otherwise, um, Michael, are you okay with us keeping the agenda as is, just because this is what was published? Um, so open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Does anyone joining us online have anything? You can always unmute and or turn your video on. We are not monitoring the chat. Okay, then we will move on, go straight into the solar requirement review of current solar regulations and the LDRs and proposed amendment. Was, um.
What this, will this amendment require a public hearing if we adopt it?
I think any LDR amendments require, yeah, if if we would move forward with something as part of the LDRs, yes. Oh, okay. Um, so we do have some information directly in the packet. Um, is that something that maybe staff wanted to go through? I know we have something from Commissioner Chalnick also. I'm not sure how you wanted to address this, Daphne and Andrew.
I'm happy to.
Was there anything you wanted to preface before Andrew jumps in?
Um, I don't think so. I think everything that I had to, the the introductory information that I had was in the packet. Um, just the information about the locations in the LDR where solar is already addressed to one to one way or in one way or another, um, nothing directly on solar require a solar requirement like Andrew has proposed, um, but just wanted to point out that the number of times that solar is is included in the way it is regulated um, in other places in the LDRs as just a point of introduction.
No, thanks. So just on the point of introduction too, before I, um, describe the proposal that that's in the packet, I I'm just wondering whether in, um, Kelsey, your review of the LDRs, you thought there were, uh, that were there any holes that you noticed or improvements? You know, um, like in comparison to what Boulder say did in requiring streets and buildings and roofs to it, I mean, it looks pretty complete, honestly, but I'm just wondering whether you were able to discern.
Um, I would say that a lot of the same, the same solar readiness requirements are there. Um, orientation of streets, orientation of buildings, solar gain opportunity, um, you know, not positioning a building in a way that would not allow for solar in the future on a rooftop. Um, there is I would say there's an opportunity for in more encouragement of solar in, um, parking o- options or existing, existing parking areas, existing parking structures, things like that, um, existing impervious surfaces um, that are not necessarily rooftops, um, as strictly defined. Uh, other than that, not in sort of building layout and, you know, subdivision design, I don't think there was much that was that was missing.
Okay, great. So, um, everyone here knows that during IZ, the city adopted what was an appendix, an optional appendix to the commercial code, which sets out requirements for commercial buildings to be solar ready. We've adopted those requirements, so our commercial buildings now are required to have a solar ready zone. And what what I'm, what what the language that I posed would accomplish would then say, okay, for those buildings that now have this solar ready zone, um, let's require folks to fill up that zone. Using, you know, reasonable, the reasonable available technology, you know, fill it up to an amount which wouldn't exceed what they'd expect to have to use. You know, the exception, if it would be too small, three thousand kilowatt hours, it's about ten panels, so systems only eight, nine panels, you wouldn't have to do anything. And based upon conversations that, I guess, Paul, we we had with folks a few years ago now, there seemed to be, um, a lot of receptivity from the commercial developers for for this kind of thing, at least no pushback, that the commercial developers that forgot how many were there, kind of uniformly thought, yeah, this this made sense, solar is pretty cheap. And, um, at least the folks in that room were, you know, thought they would support something like this. So.
Just a quick question, clarification, are we talking about new construction or pre-existing or both?
It's it's basically new because only new buildings or or maybe significant modification, I'm not sure what the how where the solar ready zone kicks in, maybe major renovations, but it's it's basically for news, anything that's required now to have a solar ready zone, which is for new stuff.
So, something that I did want to point out is I did review a few other cities that have solar requirements, solar um, options as part of meeting sort of bigger sustainability, sustainability requirements. Um, and one that I looked at, um, I believe was Cambridge, Massachusetts. The so requiring solar panels on rooftops was part of a suite of options. So it was a certain percentage of your rooftop had to be one of a few different things. Um, one option was roof mounted solar, another would, um, was, you know, green roofs, bio solar, that sort of other sustainability technology. Um, which just flagged to me that, and I wanted to flag for the commission, that there are other things that can go on rooftops. Um, where if you require eighty percent, ninety percent, some high percentage of a rooftop to be solar panels at today's technology, you're not allowing creativity with some with other options, with, you know, green roof options. Um, public civic, public spaces on like apartment building rooftops, your, you know, mixed use building rooftops. There's, just to think, just throwing it out there, no, no opinion one way or the other, just throwing it out that, yes, most rooftops go unused. Um, but there are other options too that could be included.
Cross that bridge by requiring solar ready, they couldn't use that as a public space.
I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that. The 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 ability to be a solar readiness option does not preclude sort of current use in a cer- in a different way, I would say. Um, the solar readiness is more more related to the construction standards that would allow for, you know, the electrical conduit and things like, and the other technical things like that, that I'm not.
Yeah, I thought it also included reserving the space as well as maybe.
Looking up right now, I I I'm pretty sure that it 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 does.
I think Mike, uh, Michael and Ted, I think both had something.
Yeah, um, well, yeah, my, uh, I don't want to upset the whole apple cart, but while we're doing, making or considering this amendment, I would like to propose a a further amendment. Um, and that is that, um, in chapter fifteen, under the PUDs, we do say that ground mounted solar arrays may be cited within the conservation area uh, and the buffer, uh, uh, area and transition z- zones. It, you know, that in this, in the, in the conserved area, and why I missed that or wasn't here, or wasn't asleep at the wheel, or didn't read it, uh, I think it's a mistake that we've, that we've made a mistake. And, um, in general, I'm I'm opposed to, I don't like ground mounted solar because, um, we've seen that while proponents have said you can use the land around or under it for agriculture and such like, it's it's never happened in any of the ones that we've seen around South Burlington. So, um, the conservation and buffer areas, um, are there to protect land from encroachments and development. And this is a a ground mounted solar facility is a development and is, you know, those lands are supposed to be left to a substantial extent as in their natural state, and they're also incompatible with, um, the land use provisions in our climate action plan. Where, you know, we have a science-based target and a draft action, which I can read. The target is preservation of remaining natural resource areas, increasing green infrastructure and soil and health and car- of for carbon sequestration, wildlife, da, 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 da. Flood resiliency, water filtration, et cetera. And the draft action was to revise the land development regulations to protect our remaining meadows, forests, grasslands, farmlands, uh, et cetera. So I think that that it's incompatible with, with what the city and all of us want, uh, to mitigate climate change. So I would like to see that sentence deleted from the paragraph, uh, that that encourages roof or ground mounted solar installations in conservation PUDs. Rooftop, that's fine, but in a conservation area in the seventy percent or whatever it is, uh, it's, it's, it's wrong. Uh, and it, as I said, it doesn't line up, doesn't align with what we want to do, um, in the climate action plan.
So it's, this is kind of a side topic of what Andrew's bringing up. I'm not sure when is the best time to address what you're bringing up.
Well, I thought it might be a good time to incorporate that change, uh, because, you know, we've, in our, in our LDRs, we say the primary objective of a PUD type is to conserve large contiguous tracts of open space, um, and allowing for the transfer of development rights to transfer their density away from these. Um, and, you know, we.
So I think part of the discussion was that, um, you know, a lot of the ground mounted ones can just be like one screw that goes into the ground that you can like take back out and have kind of restore it. It's it's different than a lot of other infrastructure and it's compatible with pollinators and different types of farming, um.
Not solar.
We've had people tell us that, so that was the reason I think it wound up in there like that, so.
It's never happened and I've never seen one. I've looked at all the ground mounted facilities in and around South Burlington and much further afield, not one of them is used for any purpose, other than just left as, it's a grassland, I suppose, to some extent, and natural pollinators are probably present. But, um, we're not, it's not conserving that as open space and, uh, you know, uh, we do say that conservation PUD must must demonstrate how it is consistent with the stated description that I read before at the beginning of chap, of fifteen CO five.
Um, we're happy to look into this a little further if you'd like. I I do think it's important to note that, um, one of the sort of peculiarities of this section that Michael's referring to is, uh, as you know, we, the city does not have final authority over the placement of solar when it's connected to the grid. What the conservation PUD does do though, is it says if you choose to put solar in an area that is conservation, it does not count towards your seventy percent minimum conservation on the pro- in the conservation PUD, so it comes out of your thirty percent development. So it's, it's sort of, um, if you choose to put a large solar, it's a way for us to essentially regain a little bit of control.
Still left open?
This, your solar cannot count towards your seventy percent is what it says in here. So we don't have final authority of where solar gets placed, but we do get to say whether it counts as your seventy percent minimum conserve. So what it's saying is, if you're choosing to, it's it's effectively saying, if you choose to build a solar in a, um, a a designated conservation area, you're going to have to conserve something else instead. Essentially.
So, well, I must say that does seem in contrast to the way it's worded in the packet, so maybe the statement in the packet was.
Are we talking about the ground mounted solar in the PUD?
Yeah, it's so, so just, and and this may be that it's being summarized in the packet.
CO five, whatever, let's, I'll.
Says in conservation, PUD's ground mountains, mounted solar arrays may be cited within the conservation area and the buffer area slash transition zone.
So, yes, so what I, what is written in this, in the packet is is accurate as to physical location within the boundaries of an area. Um, it doesn't include the additional piece of information that I and I should have included that it won't count towards the seventy percent minimum requirement. Like, it could be in the middle of the seventy percent because we have no control over where it is cited, um, but it would have to be seventy-three percent or seventy-seven percent or whatever the number might be.
What, um, what I might suggest on this piece of it is, uh, the climate action plan does recommend that the next version of the comprehensive plan include an enhanced energy plan. Um, what that is, is it's essentially a plan for how we're going to meet our fair share of the uh, energy needs of the state. If a community does that, of which many in Chittenden County have done, you then get what's called substantial deference at the state, um, review level. That might be the time to marry all these things up and say, let's be really clear to the state about where we do and do not want solar. And then we'll have substantial deference with it. That might be a way to sort of make sure that we're looking at this um, three sixty, um, but that's, if you'd like to look at it sooner and have us clean up that language, um, we're happy to do that too.
Yeah, well, maybe we could not encourage, but permit. For for now, I I think lo- longer term, I think we need to change it. Which should perhaps be on the list of iter- the of it, um, of iteration changes that we are contemplating as we go forward and package them or do the, a bunch of them at once when, when we're ready.
You know, it sounds like we may be able to get into more detail in the, the energy plan about citing and where things are encouraged, where things are not encouraged, and maybe more details there.
Um, and just as a point on the enhanced energy plan, I have been in touch with the, um, Regional Planning Commission who they've told, they've told me that the Climate Action Plan meets many of the requirements of an Enhanced Energy Plan. Um, but it will need some additional mapping and possibly a few additional targets, um, associated with the mapping. They are looking at, um, sometime in the spring. Sometime in the spring to be updating the mapping, um, related to Act one seventy-four and the the Enhanced Energy Plan mapping, um, and that breaking it out by municipality will likely get back to us, um, sort of spring, early summer, and then we can move forward with the Enhanced Energy Plan stuff.
I mean.
Um, do you want to address this?
No, I wanted to get back to the.
Yes, yeah, Ted had a question about your proposal, I believe.
Right, I, yeah, two things, one of which was all clarified, so answered that, but the, um, I guess the point I have is getting out of the swamp, going back to the rooftop. As we build out parts of the city, you know, our whole idea, our whole concern has been, is there going to be enough space below for people to recreate and so on? And hence, maybe green space on the roof is important. So again, to your point, uh, I'd really like to, you know, make sure that we don't lose that possibility because I I continue to worry that as we build north of, well, north side of Williston Road, that we're just not going to have enough space for people to recreate. So maybe some of the rooftops will accommodate part of it, so that's one concern I have.
Andrew?
Right, so the the solar zone addresses a lot of these points, so the 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 first thing it says, it is a a section designated and reserved for installation of solar, but then in defining the solar ready zone, defines it as a roof area, less area covered by roof decks, vegetated roof area, mandatory access. So I think it, I think it already incorporates some of those, those considerations.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I just, um, I was just putting it out there as as other things to consider about the utility of rooftops. Um, especially if you wanted to, if putting on, you know, requirements for the minimum amount of solar, you know, I don't know the details of available technology, if you have, you know, minus roof decks and minus this and minus that, and then a solar ready zone, if it's not big enough to meet the requirements under your.
There is no requirement, that's, so, the what what I, what the language simply says is, once you've got your solar zone, which again is is less all these other areas under the, the regs, and now you've, now you've got your, whatever it is, ten feet by ten feet, ten feet by twenty feet, whatever it is, it simply says to, um, reasonably maximize the solar PV potential of that zone. It doesn't say you need to generate eight thousand kilowatt hours of fifteen or just, you've now got the zone, reasonably maximize it. So basically, fill that zone with, you know, existing technology.
Monica, you want to go? Yep, uh, so I have a question for staff, um, because I'm not sure who wrote this, and then I also have a comment. My question is, in the packets, it says, um, that the city may not legally be, it may not be legally possible that the city require that the solar generation system actually be connected to the grid. So, that me, just want to make sure I understand that, so the LDRs can say, have, have everything up ready to go.
Yep.
But we can't say, and plug it in.
You could say, well, it, the, the, to plug it into the grid. Um, the anticipation would be that if you had the solar ready, you wouldn't just, the solar requirement, everything installed, it would be silly to not attach it to something, um, but you could have onsite batteries, you could have, um, be running your own building in a closed loop system, something else like that.
So here's the reason I was asking that, it leads into my second question or comment really, which I did share with Andrew earlier to give him some time to to think about it, um. If we can't say that, is it possible for us to create um, uh, uh, an alternate option for people, which would be if you have enough, um, uh, what did you, I'm sorry, I can't find your document, Andrew, but, um, you you called them, um, obstacles or intrusions that would, uh, prevent you from having any solar, um, that we would require you to connect to a community grid? So are we not able to do that in LDRs? Kind of as an offset, if you can't have solar, or if you don't want to have solar, you have to have X amount of power connecting to a community grid. Are we not able to do that, or are we? And if we are, I'll go to my comment, which explains this.
I, um, Monica, I says, the issue I believe is that once you uh, leave your building or your site and you go on to the public utilities, you are essentially, they have to get their approval to be connect, to be on the public utilities, whether it's, you know, going a mile down the road to a community one, or it's going to the grid entirely. And I, I think that the attorney's view is, we don't have the authority to force Green Mountain Power to say yes to connection.
But do we have the authority to say that the building needs to try to connect to a community solar if they cannot have rooftop solar?
We can, so it's a question. We can say try, but what we can't say is you must, we can't, we, we don't have the authority to require somebody using uh, out, uh, lines that belong to another entity, I guess, is what it fundamentally comes down to, because we don't we don't have authority over Green Mountain Power.
Okay, so I just put that thought out there though, in case it's ever, um, and so my comment on, that I did contact Andrew about, and Andrew can maybe share some of what we discussed, but, um, and I can't find the language, but you said something about, um, you know, i- if there's an obstacle or something that would interfere with being able to generate solar, then that's kind of considered. And, um, it, I, it reminded me that, um, after IZ, we agreed to ask the Natural Resources Committee to give us their feedback on what we heard from the community, which was wanting protection of, I'm going to call them senior trees, a senior tree being, right? And so this may be a tree that's not within a habitat block, is not otherwise protected. Um, and so my question to Andrew was, does this, does this set of LDRs um, give the developer almost, um, a, a free pass or a, a primary goal of removing a senior tree in order to hat, to maximize its solar? Um, and the cave comes down to this, and I remember years ago, we had this discussion in the planning commission, we never, I don't, but it was like, yeah, trees versus solar, and so Andrew does have some good information, but the fact is the, as written, correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, as written, it does give the solar the priority over the senior tree, okay, or or if not, then
No, no.
That's what I thought, what you and I said, or your email said that, that solar, okay.
What, I think, well, I mean.
So, so let me just, let me just finish and then I'll pass it over. So, so my comment is simply, I would recommend that we hear back from the Natural Resource Committee on that the senior tree issue in conjunction with this, or consider a senior tree being, and I'm, I I don't think the word was obstacle, uh, uh, an obstruction. Um, but at least to have something in there temporarily until we've had the Natural Resources Committee way back on what to do, if there's the situation. And if it's already addressed, that's great. I didn't understand that from our conversation. So if there is a senior tree, is, can it be, um, can it be protected until this issue is resolved, um, in order to meet the solar? So, thanks.
So I think that it'd be probably helpful for everyone to take a look at the solar ready zone regulations that we adopted. Because those regulations do a lot of the work here, and one thing they exclude is if the building is shaded, then it doesn't need to have a solar ready zone, or if there's an obstruction, it doesn't need to have a show, a solar ready zone. So, you know, I read those words as saying, okay, if it's, if it's shaded with a tree, then, you know, you don't have to have a solar rays on. That doesn't mean that someone can't cut the tree down if they wanted solar, that that's what we talked about.
Right, okay.
It doesn't protect the tree, but anyone can cut a tree down today and build solar. But I don't think there's anything in here which requires that, and in fact, if it's shaded, I think it says, you're you're exempt. So that's, that that, I think that, so I don't. Well, so I don't, there's anything, there's nothing here that requires someone to cut down a tree.
I I guess it's just ensuring, uh, making sure that the public is aware that putting a a requirement on, which I'm not opposed to requiring solar, I think it's a great thing we need to do, but that if that requirement were not there, the shade may not be a concern. Now that the requirement might be there, it may create the idea to remove the shade to get the solar, which wouldn't have been there before. So there may be trees that the public sees coming down and the developer to say, hey, 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 I'm just trying to maximize my solar. The, I think a a conversation acknowledging that that can happen, and you found great information, Andrew, that that expresses.
That can happen in any event, right? If someone wants to cut down the tree today, they can't put up solar, but.
But I think this is what the, this is what we were asked to discuss after IZ, which is, can people just go chop down anything?
We don't have a tree.
That's right, that's what we're talking about.
This could be covered.
This is what I'm, so I'm, my suggestion is simply that at least the conversation happened and that the public is aware that if we do proceed with this before the tree ordinance is discussed, people may see a mature tree going that maybe otherwise wouldn't have, and maybe they can anyway. But I'm just saying, we were, we were taxed with doing that tree ordinance as a priority and we don't have those results yet. So my my suggestion is just to parallel track this or somehow address it so that the public is aware and the city council is aware when they see these, this change.
I think.
Just maybe a couple of things on the tree, I mean, honestly, I don't really see the 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 link. Just maybe a couple of things on the tree. I mean, honestly, I don't really see the the link. I mean, we need a tree ordinance, but I don't see how this. Would incentivize or otherwise someone to cut down a tree. But but having said that, um. You know, it's interesting, if you look at the the come like the last one to want to cut down a trees, I think all trees are sacred. But from a carbon sequestration perspective, the solar is like order magnitudes, you know. I mean, if you have to take down, say, two mature trees that are shading a building that has a. Me medium sized solar rate, say generating twenty thousand kilowatt hours that. In general is sequestering about or avoiding the emissions of like twenty thousand pounds of CO2. And each mature tree absorbs like fifty pounds a year. So it's like a hundred hair versus twenty thousand there. You know, it's kind of orders of magnitude better for climate change to actually take those two trees down, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not advocating for that. Just to put things in perspective.
I think it's good information for the public to be aware of, you know, because I think it.
And I also don't think this has anything to do with trees, because I think they're already, it's already exempt.
Well, and I think, well, I think the a bigger point that Monica is making is that. It does say if it's shaded, it's exempt. So I think that that's important. You know, we're not saying you have to cut down a tree to get rid of the shade to then put this in. So I think that that's important. Um, I think one of the things, and I I probably, as you said, should have looked closer at this. But I thought we'd talk about it, and it was important to talk about as a group anyway, but. What types of development does this apply to? Because I I know in, you know, it says commercial, but then, you know, is that a mixed use building is that? You know, a lot of us think of commercial as like a business or an office, but I think it might apply to some other types of buildings too, like maybe multifamily in some cases. So I guess just maybe having a really clear understanding of like what buildings. It already applies to, and then we'd expand this requirement on to, so. Know if that's a question for Paul.
Uh, yes, so a commercial building is defined as being not a residential building in the energy code, which is very helpful. To this conversation. So give me a second while I get to residential. For this code, residential building includes detached one and two family dwellings. And um and multiple single family homes, i.e. townhomes. And uh group R two, R three, R four, there are various different classifications of buildings. Three stories or less in height. That are again residential. So a residential building, a commercial building is is anything that is not residential. And anything that is residential and more than three stories in height. So four story residential building like the one across the street from us would be considered a commercial building for the purposes of the energy.
Right. And then anything that's mixed use, no matter what the height is, would that also be considered commercial?
Yes, and also there is a lot of talk that there may be a third energy code coming forward. Which would be a mixed use energy code in the very near future. Um, I don't have the details on what that would do. But that's um imminent enough that the language for the recently passed. Um, ordinance of heating and new systems contemplates that it will exist at some point, not to this in future, but.
And I guess.
Have to wait and see what it.
I guess part of why I brought it up is because um. You know, it's the type of building that already has. A lot of design and mechanical drawings and things going into it. And you know, that's why I think we were comfortable with. Adopting what we have so far. Um, you know, so now this is just kind of one step further. Still seems reasonable. I mean, it's not someone's duplex or kind of smaller scale residential.
Has there been a cost analysis in any way of what this might do to a building, you know, as we're.
Yeah, I mean, we did that again when we presented, it was a few years ago now, but you know, kilowatt hour. The cost of a kilowatt hour and today, I mean, it keeps dropping. Even then was, you know, like it was like two thirds or one half of what GMP charges when you applies it. Over the life of the system. So again, and all all the commercial developers recognize that they said, yeah, this this makes economic sense. Certainly not more expensive. And and the costs have only dropped since then. So it'll keep getting cheaper and cheaper.
The I guess the one addition I'd make to that, Andrew, is my recollection of from the conversations was that. There are load requirements for buildings, and there may occasionally be times when. A building would otherwise meet a standard and then with uh. With the added load of solar that it sort of trips into the next category, and it's not necess, you know, it's not like you need one more I beam. It's that sometimes it could trip over to the next one.
No, but that's again, already incorporated in the solar ready requirement, the the load, the building has to be designed for to um. Handle that load. So that that's the beauty of leveraging the solar ready.
So it's already.
Because it's very does it does so much work for us in so many areas.
Yeah, my question had to do logistics. Is there the opportunity, I I noticed when we mentioned solar ready zone, we're strictly talking about rooftops. Is there the opportunity to move some of that, if the developer wanted to to? I think Kelsey, you mentioned impervious surfaces, parking stop, anything like that? I mean, is is another way to, they still need to require, but just not on the roof.
The lead in could, I I I certainly wouldn't be pose, if we say something like, you know. Require you install a C a system to reasonably maximize his own, which system may be installed on the roof or nearby parking lot, I mean.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's, you know, fiscally.
Say that.
Makes sense to do it the other way, but just if there's. You know, a reason not to do it on the roof and do it somewhere else.
Good, I think it is a good idea, you know, for the reasons we talked about, the other things roofs might be used for. Could be a reasonable alternative. And then um, I think you said this, Andrew, there's not a specific. Target. Because it's it's based on like the available space. That's that's still the case.
Yeah, that that that's that was my intent to not require. You know, a certain amount of solar, but just say, okay. If you have this defined area, which takes into account all the other uses, right, which. Are, you know, appropriate and 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 um, you know, the developer can choose which which use. He or she thinks is is more appropriate. And then after you've defined that area, but now you've got an area, just fill up that area.
Any questions or comments? I. Could you, someone explain the like A B. A A B actually looks like there's two As, it's actually very, the exceptions here. I'm just finding them difficult to like understand exactly what were what the.
Yeah, I wrote it, so I'll I'll give it a shot.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
At least the intention, I mean, because it's it's just seems a little complicated the way it's worded.
Yeah, um, so I can't remember where that interconnection language came from, but it was when we were. Thinking about this a few years ago, and I think it was GMP, someone from GMP suggested that um. They they may not be sufficient, you know, the lines may not have sufficient amperage or it just may not be able to connect.
Yeah.
And so so that first A uh is just intended to address that possibility. Then um. There's also an exemption or a limit if. You know, let's say the solar ready zone is is huge. And in fact, if you filled it up, you you generate much more solar than the building could use and. I think when we, when this was considered by the by the planning commission now, as I'm thinking about it, there was a. There was a meeting, someone came and said, hey, what why would you make me build more than I can use? And so this this was intend to address that comment. I forgot who made that comment. It was someone who made the comment. Uh, at a planning commission meeting. So this this says, well, you know, estimate anticipate how much. You you know, you think you'll use in your first typical year. And I just kind of specify how you do that. There's there's an online tool. That lets you like put in the slope of your roof and your longitude, latitude, and how much shade there is and all these things. And you can then, it spits out a number for you. And so. You know, the exception is to say you're not required to build more, put more panels on than. After doing that calculation, you know, you'd be expected to um those. The panel, you're not required to put panels on such that they would generate more energy than you'd be expected to to use in a typical year.
Okay, so just to summarize, I think it's actually a pretty simple concept, if I'm getting it. You don't have to put on more solar than you typically use.
Yes.
That's it.
That's that's.
So A and then A and B, that's all it's it's setting up a method for. Somebody to not have to put on more than they use themselves. Okay, got it. Perfect. Makes complete sense.
Again, taking, let's say, three buildings uh north of Williston Road. And um each one maybe has a solar project on the roof or wherever. Is there any possibility of having pooling the resources? And having it placed somewhere, but but it would accommodate those three buildings. Way to be creative and not say, okay, you have to solar, you have to, or it's just zone or group.
Well, I think if the commission wanted to move forward with with this, I think. Um, you know, Andrew's alluded a couple of times to the uh commercial building energy code and and the solar ready roofs. Um, I think it would be valuable for us to more fully understand the first exception. Here, which says a building with a permanently installed onsite renewable energy system, which includes geothermal. And might, in my very quick read of it, might include the ground mounted solar that you were talking about over a parking lot. It might also um. Be interpreted to say if you're building three or four buildings and you've accommodated the need on the site, that it doesn't necessarily need to be on each building. Um, I'm reading this as close to a layperson on the fly, so I think that's something would be worth some follow up with the. State on that to see how they're interpreting it, but it might address that concern.
That beats in to the other part of the question is that if someone has too much. Um, solar, could they then allocate it to their neighbor and sell it or? Is there adaptability or flexibility there?
Right. Yeah, I think that becomes essentially, I think what you're describing is essentially group net metering where. More than one building goes together and their power bills together uh meet that.
The uh there are some legal issues related to the ownership of the system. I tried to get. Four of my neighbors to each have solar on their garage roof, which is a lot of space. And I was told by some common and another provider that um. They can't, they can't each own their their piece of this installation. One of us has to own it. We can share it, but a a single owner, so three buildings owned by the same person would be okay. That may have changed since then, but that's, and then you have the associations which um. Which are already exist, where you can, so somebody sets up a facility and then. And people join in and buy power from it.
Okay, so I guess um, is there general interest in moving forward with this? Maybe we can always ask for more information and refine it, but I mean, before we talk about it forever, general interest. Okay, general interest. And then I guess just for how to move on, I know, like Ted, you asked about cost. I don't know if people feel like we need more information on cost, or if we need input from the energy committee, or if there's anything that. Seems important to like check on before moving forward.
The energy committee sent a letter to us.
So they they did a long time ago, but I don't know if they.
It's in last month.
Oh, did they? Did I miss it? While you guys are looking at that.
I'm not making it up.
What what's the next step then?
Well, I had a comment.
Yeah.
That just as, um, I mean, I would, I I did ask for a status of um where we were with the uh tree. Ordinance, and I know that um we still have to reach out to the Natural Resources Committee. I would just recommend that that kind of happens simultaneously. Because if they do have a comment about this, considering the interest in that ordinance, I think it would be fair for them to weigh in. But they have, I don't think they've been able to be briefed yet on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's been on our work plan to like ask them to look at those couple of things, the that committee. Can we get that on our agenda coming up? Because I know we, it was one of the committee assignments.
Yeah, I think my my understanding is that that occurred, the 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 request to send it to the Natural Resource Committee about the tree ordinance specifically happened over the summer. Um, but it just hasn't, the request hasn't been made to the Natural Resource Committee, so I don't think any further. Action by the commission needs to happen for that to be sent to them. That's on and on staff at this point, I believe. And Paul can correct me.
Can I just weigh in? Because I I am I'm the liaison to natural resources and conservation. And they have been discussing a tree ordinance, and I believe their recommendation for ARPA money. Is to have some kind of older tree, senior tree um. Kind of analysis uh in in the city of South Burlington, so we have, they would have a handle on. What we're talking about in terms of older trees. Some of it was related to the um. What is the thing that's killing the trees? The bugs.
Everyone ash borer.
Ash borer, but they are um thinking ahead and know that they're interested in the tree ordinance. But feel they need some assistance to um work on that.
Great, thank you, Helen.
So just, we we did get a letter, and actually they addressed the economics October eleventh. So they say at current prices. And with current incentives, it's turning less expensive to turn electricity from a solar rate. And yeah, the energy, Tim Perrin sent up a half of the energy committee a letter, and it has a bunch of stuff, but just as relevant to the. Question about costs, it says at current prices and with current incentives, it is generally less expensive to generate electricity from a solar rate than to buy it from GMP.
Great.
Uh, my apologies for not sending that around. It was sent to Jessica and I just forwarded it to everyone. Sorry about that.
Yes, sorry about that.
Speaking for myself, I'm fully um endorse what Andrew has proposed. Uh, I don't know where we go from here, um whether we need a motion to approve it and then. Take it to the next step. How would that work?
I guess I would ask if there's any, there's been discussion about different. Versions, different, you know, things to include or not include how it's written, changing this or changing that or or leaving it as it is. Um, I was just curious if any members of the commission had any, anything they wanted included or anything excluded. You know, any changes proposed um before before a motion to to move it forward.
Um, well, usually we don't have a motion till we have like specific language. Was this what you'd consider specific language? Like. You know, usually we give like a general head nod on the the direction and then. Like specific language would come back that we would vote on.
Well, I guess that was my question. Is there specific, is there specific language um that any member of the commission? Would like to change or add.
I maybe modify that slightly to say, if is there a specific policy change that you'd like to see in there? Because given that this is a fairly new area, we're going to have the city attorney probably look at this very early for the actual specific language. So I would suggest, does anybody have a policy adjustment that they'd like to recommend?
I did, but I was persuaded that we could pick it up later.
Yeah, um. I think if there's a, I mean, I wouldn't want anyone to think they had to cut down a tree to do this, and I know it's like vaguely described in the. I don't know if there's a way to like just say you don't have to take down a tree to put it in. Um, I don't know.
Preferences to not preferably.
I I I guess, for what I mentioned earlier, solar ready zone, is that strictly rooftop or do we give? Other choices on that, I, that doesn't, I don't know if we define that here or.
It appears Duncan, and I think we we need to do some more homework, that as it, as I said a minute ago, the. There's an exemption for when there is onsite renewable energy. And and my quick read of that suggests that what that means is if you have, say, geothermal. In your building, you are exempt from having a solar ready roof. have, say, geothermal in your building, you are exempt from having a solar ready roof, which I gather would then exempt you from having a solar requirement.
Or presumably if you already put on uh solar parking lot.
That's, that's, that's what.
Being exempted from.
Yeah. Or if you wanted to do some of it not on the roof.
No, but I think, right, wait, I mean, I think Paul's right the way, I think the way this is written, but subject confirmation, I I think if someone's already kind of put, you know, solar panels in a parking lot, then they wouldn't have to have a solar ready zone. I then they wouldn't have to put solar PV in the solar ray zone. So I I I think it already incorporates it.
Do you think we have to check it though? Like, because if something's being built at the same time, and then if the DRBs feels like they have to go with the language unless there's something already built on the site? Like, if we really want it truly to be an alternative, maybe we don't clearly say that. Depending on what the lawyer comes there.
There are, you know, obviously trade offs in shading uh. And my own system is a case in point. Uh, there are trees that shade my panels uh late in the day and particularly in winter because they're south of us. Um, but there's a trade off. What what is the ecological contribution that those trees make? It can be measured, can be converted to dollars. What are we giving up in power generation? Um, and you know, if the if the if ecological contribution is equal to or or more than, then uh it's not an issue. Uh, we leave the tree. I prefer not to cut down trees if we can. So there must be, we should try to find a way to calibrate this. What is it? What is it? What is that tree worth? How many kilowatt hours is it worth if you cut it down? And how much is it worth? And how much kilo, how many kilowatt hours don't you get if you leave it? I know we can't get there now, but that's something that we should bear in mind.
Well, yeah, I think those calculations are are easy. It's about fifty pounds per per tree, which is about a half a kilowatt hour. Um, and typical raise, you know, ten thousand, twenty thousand kilowatt hours. So it's it's like two orders of magnitude difference.
My god, oh, sorry, go ahead.
But again, I I think there's there's nothing in here now, and we can clarify it, which requires anybody to cut down a tree. On the other hand, there's nothing but for upcoming tree ordinance, which prevents someone from cutting down the tree today or tomorrow. So I'm I'm not sure this really has anything to do with trees.
Yeah, I'm I'm sure it can be covered in the tree ordinance and, you know, when and when may you and when may you, when can uh can you not cut down a tree? I mean, I'm sure that'll be there.
I think what it does have to do with is public understanding, because there will be trees going down. And a developer can say they're not protected and I'm doing it for my solar, but it's it's the the public may be upset when they see trees being cut down. Um, so it's really more respecting the community and ensuring that they understand, because they may not understand that it's fifty, it's, you know, yes, it's a fifty year old tree, but it's only worth this much. And therefore, they I think that's that's where it does tie into this. I I def, I I I mean, I I think the community will um it just finding a way to communicate it to them so that it's understood.
Anything else on this item? I think general agreement with those couple of little things, maybe?
Yeah, I just triple checking, so I make sure that the next time we come back with this that we have um have the top, have this policy items in it that everybody would like to see in it. Is there anything? So the the looking into the trees, Michael, what? Sorry, you pointed at me.
No, I was, you wanted to say something about something that I said.
Oh, I was, I was just going to say that that, yes, it's the the numbers that Andrew presented um calculate carbon and the car and the climate change and carbon sequestration and that value. Trees have other ecological value um or or community value as as I'm Monica's alluding to and historical cultural value, like there are other pieces to that puzzle. Um, but that's, as we've all sort of said, is a little bit more in the tree ordinance than in the solar ordinance. So um, I just wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to to say what they wanted to say about any policy points to include or that they disagree with in what has been presented.
I think we got it. Yep, yeah. Thank you. And thank you.
And I just would leave it as if i- if to what you just said, Kelsey, it's going back to what the expectations are in terms of order of priority, because we left I Z with a list of requests for the committees, and that was a prioritized next step. This wasn't necessarily on it, and I'm not opposed to this. I think this is good stuff. It needs to happen. I wonder if we left the impression that the priority was getting the tree ordinance discussion. So I think it's, there's a timing issue there. And if this one is sped through and the Natural Resources Committee is saying they need more time, I just think it's to communicate, well, has the priority changed? And this this does take a priority over the ordinance or not. I think that it's a fair thing to um ask or to state, to state.
Okay, so I think I think we're good. We got the update on the tree ordinance, which was very nice from Helen. Um, and I think we can move on to the announcements and staff reports. So there are a few things in here, like.
So we are not going to make a motion to approve this language and then have it vetted by the attorneys?
I don't think we need that quite yet.
I mean, if you'd like to do a straw poll to it so that there's something in the minutes, please feel free to do it.
Sure, um. I think we want to add, so the idea was that generally what's in here, if need be, make it clear you don't have to cut a tree if need be, and if need be, add a statement that um the solar could be in an alternative location such as over the parking. So those were the two things we talked about maybe adding. So with those two things possibly added, do we gen, who would be generally in favor of moving this forward? Say aye. Aye, so that is unanimous, so. Very good, knowing that.
Sue, can you make sure that that's in the minutes? I'll assume you heard me, and if not, we'll add it.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Sue, okay, so announcements and staff report. Um, I, so I guess my announcement, I got um a letter from Affordable Housing Committee saying that they um had voted to ask the City Council for the AR, A A R P money um related to funding of a study on affordable housing, and they'd ask if we would like um kind of uh I guess endorsed their idea or not, but it's not on the packet, like it wasn't on our agenda and it wasn't warned and people didn't get a chance to read it. So um so we didn't follow up on that request. But you know, I think we've already as a group endorsed the idea of having some of the money go towards affordable housing type projects. So um it seems kind of reasonable that we've already kind of endorsed that uh type of project, so.
And who's going to do the study? Is it going to be an independent uh group?
What was, they were asking for a specific type of study, Paul, that I guess was last done in two thousand thirteen. Can you just shed light on that?
I think it was a housing needs assessment. So it's uh an analysis essentially of um what going a couple of levels deeper than just a number of housing units, but what uh what are the characteristics of what is needed in the community in terms of uh different stages of life, different incomes, different uh uh what are our projected needs going forward uh as a both for ourselves and as, you know, a member of the inner Chippement County area. So that's that's essentially what that would be looking at is what are the demographics coming up? What are our needs? What are we? Uh, what are our strengths? What are what are the housing costs? I recall one of the things from the twenty thirteen uh study was talking about um uh taking steps to support the retention of existing housing. Um, single family homes, say, in the Chamberlain neighborhood, because new homes can't be built at that price. So in terms of entry level
Mm-hmm.
um, housing, that's largely irreplaceable, and the city took actions to put in the the housing preservation standards following that, that kind of thing. So it takes a deeper dive than just straight numbers.
And who's going to conduct the study?
It would likely be an outside group.
Okay, independent.
Like a consultant type.
Like broadly speaking, um, a recommendation that we're gonna make as it relates to the comprehensive plan for you all is there are, we've identified some needs for three or four different similar studies that um maybe could be set a clear objective of doing one per year over the next few years. You, Ted, you've talked about a uh park master plan, housing needs assessment, a uh a pedestrian and bicycle master plan for the city. There's a few that sort of fall into these categories of significant studies that um if we plan to say we're gonna get all five of them done in five years, let's let's do that. Um. So just preview of coming attractions.
Sounds good. Um, and then anyone else have announcements?
I have a few, as I said in there.
I have two announcements.
I'll go after them.
Okay, um Donna Luban, I actually didn't realize she forwarded this as well to a number of you, but I'll send this link uh to um again, there is a bike sa- bike and pedestrian safety gathering at, I love this, the Old Spokes Home. You know where that is? I never heard of it. Zimunuski or Burlington, maybe?
Yeah.
Um, but it look, but there is also a download of this um film. It's by the Street Project, and it just looks like a really good um bike pedestrian safety, like hunt, community led um safety initiative. So I'll forward that now to for you guys to all take a look at. Um, and I mean, I guess I'll just uh say that I I'm not sure if this will be my last meeting. I have, I resigned my seat, and I think everybody probably knows that. And as everyone's probably either read or at least heard about Paul Engel's uh email. Um, I am stepping down. Um, I do hope that the City Council opts to select a um person that brings a more diverse perspective than what I'm able to bring to you all. So I feel strongly about that being important. So um, but I really appreciate uh Paul and Jessica, Paul Connor and Jessica uh all the training and uh time you've spent educating me over the last six years about the world of planning and zoning. Um, and I thank all of you for your service and for what you're about to do to evolve our comp plan for the next decade. So I might see you at another meeting or maybe not, because I am happy to serve until the twenty first, unless there's another person appointed, so.
Thank you for your service, Monica.
Thank you, Monica.
Yes, your hard work. You're well, you you've been well educated, obviously, and you show it. So we'll we'll miss that uh that expertise.
Yeah, I agree, Monica. You bring a lot to the group.
You also do your hard work.
Yes, you do your homework, which is great.
A couple of updates from, go ahead. A couple of updates from last week's uh City Council meeting. Uh, the council approved uh submission of the municipal planning grant that you uh approved the prior week. Um, we now have our newest staff member, uh Marty Gillies, who started a couple of months ago, is now an acting zoning administrator. So the system that we're using now in our department is rather than having a single zoning administrator that does all the permitting, uh, we've gone with a more um start to finish approach. So uh we have three-ish people who are each in development review, and they're seeing projects from the start to the finish. So it's not a handoff like it used to be. It's um, we think it's going to be stronger customer service, um, not relearning, and also it's um professionally interesting for folks to see a project right to its finish, so. Um.
Just a question with that. Does that mean like if a a landowner or a or someone comes in with initial questions on a piece of land, like they might have that staff member work with them, you?
We still have, right, so so Betsy Brown, who's our uh planning and zoning assistant, is sort of our gatekeeper. So she sort of assigns out. She'll often take the really quick ones herself, and then if it's a little bit more involved, then she'll then she'll sort of um direct people uh like a traffic cop to, here's your person, and then that person will help you through. And then we're also, you know, pair uh matching that with having moved much more digital and expecting to go much, much more in the future so that uh in the event that somebody is out sick or they get hit by the proverbial autobus, then we can pick up where they left off. It's not sort of contained in one person's head. So, yeah. Uh, the council held their public hearing and adopted the amendments to the Land Development Regulations, expanding the T D R program. Uh, Michael was there for that. Thank you, Michael, for attending. Um, the council uh also had a first reading of an ordinance to consider education impact fees. Um, this is a recommendation from the school district you may have heard of. This would be for um they're calling zero energy modules, ZEMS, at two of the elementary schools, Marcot and Orchard uh for to meet a a shorter term capacity need. Uh, it's approximately six million dollars cost for these um which is um higher than they were expecting. Um, certainly in the spring. Um the school district is considering putting a bond to the voters in the, at the March election, which would be for this, as well as some deferred maintenance and some other pieces. They have asked the council to consider uh the impact fees that would cover about ninety percent of the cost, not including any interest with the with the on the bond payment. So that would range, uh, it would, the fee would be for new development or added bedrooms and would vary based on the number of bedrooms in a home from about twenty five hundred dollars up to about twelve thousand dollars. Uh, so um that is what is being considered. The council asked for some adjustments to it uh that we're, that staff is going to bring back to them uh shortly on some technical matters. And the council will then decide if they choose to hold a public hearing on it and then may move forward.
Yeah, a question on that, or just a something to keep in mind, um, because I listened to uh the original discussion about that um with the superintendent presenting, and the way that it was decided to go, I guess, which is what you just mentioned, which is this payment for an additional bedroom. Um, they did say, I believe, that another option would be to just to do a generic, you know, flat, and it it is a little bit I think concerning to me that they're singling out like the additional bedroom strategy, because we don't want to discourage multiple bedroom units. I mean, especially if we're moving into more and more dense living, you know, anything we can do. I know we're requiring, you know, multiple types, so that's great. But any, but you know, if there's maybe some things to keep an eye on over time, because it would be really upsetting to know that a developer would have done a two bedroom, would have done a three bedroom, but uh except for that, so they're gonna do the smaller one instead, where if there isn't just an overall, and this is a short term, um, not a permanent measure, and it just seems more fair to just have it stretched across all. I don't know if there's flexibility there. I don't know if anyone else has the same concern. But it it struck me as a concern, and I didn't really raise it in that meeting, because it was um, but I do raise it here, that I I hope it doesn't harm a developer's choice to develop a three bedroom.
That's that's a um fair point, Monica. I um and certainly something that um we've been looking at as we present the information to to council to make their decision with it. Um, the 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 council did talk about the possibility of just doing a straight across the board fee. What potentially is challenging with that is that a developer building a smaller unit um might point to the analysis report and say, your own report says we don't have very many children, and yet you're charging me as though I have more than that. Um, so it they would potentially make the 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 fairness challenge from their direction too, which is tricky, but I fully acknowledge the point. Um, the uh council uh also received a presentation from Andrew Chalnick uh and from Ethan Goldman uh serving as chair and and vice chair of the uh Climate Action Plan Task Force uh to potentially place a ballot item on the March ballot for um uh to to grant the authority Uh to to grant the authority for the municipality to regulate thermal energy systems in existing buildings. Subject to another public vote after that time. So the council heard that. And they're gonna discuss it further tomorrow night um because of timelines for charter changes. Effectively, the council will need to decide tomorrow night if they are going to go forward with the required public hearings. They could, at the end of the public hearings, choose to still not put it on the ballot, but if they don't move forward of public hearings. Uh tomorrow, then they it would not be on, it would not be es- essentially able to be on the ballot. So that's for their discussion tomorrow night. And I think those are my updates. Oh, one more. Today, we issued uh the zoning permit for construction of a new building right behind Healthy Living. Uh for that will contain a hundred and twenty uh homes affiliated with University of Vermont Medical Center. So essentially on Garden Street, just i- if you continue it past Healthy Living. Go over the little bridge that's been constructed immediately to the right there. So a hundred and twenty homes, a small cafe. And a uh onsite daycare. Um which will be a really neat addition to city center um and something that um. We're really excited is a is a component of that because there is a definite need for that.
Is that separate from the other UVM? I thought it was uh there was a student.
Medical Center.
Yeah, is there an?
There's two buildings that they are participating in. One is the one that's under construction right now. And one is this one that we just issued the part the zoning permit for construction on, so expect to see ground being broken sometime pretty soon.
That's great.
Yeah.
Um one thing I had noted, um. Kelsey had sent around the schedule, our meeting schedule for twenty twenty-three. I know some years we have not done the second meeting in December, because it's usually like Christmas week or the week between Christmas and New Year's. So I guess I. What? So so I guess two things. So I guess I just wanted to address. I just wanted to address our December meetings for both this year, twenty twenty-two and for that. Twenty twenty-three schedule and just see. Um where we were at with that second December meeting.
So it's not on your planned schedule for this.
Okay, so we we do not have a second meeting in December on twenty twenty-two this year, but it's. Do we wanna also take it off for next year's the day after Christmas? It seems like maybe not the best day to try to have a meeting.
That's fine with me. It was just, it was scheduled as the second and fourth Tuesdays unless they had to be moved for landing on a holiday. All right. I'm going home.
Oh, you're keeping us on our toes. It's perfect.
I have second and fourth Tuesdays.
I didn't see anything else on the schedule that jumped out. Did anyone see any of those dates that looked? Okay, so other than that one change. Twenty-six.
This year, thirteenth only, not twenty-seven.
Yes, this year is only December thirteenth, nothing scheduled in the. General holiday week and then Jessica was saying next year. To just take that last one off the the published schedule from now. And I'm fine with that.
Okay, any other announcements or things under this item? Okay, then we can move on to the comprehensive plan discussion about thriving neighborhoods.
Yeah, so just to jump right right into everything with the comprehensive plan. Um something that we do, mo- most of what I wanna say I did outline in the memo, um but just to quickly paraphrase. The discussion, the planning commission's discussion of existing neighborhoods and. How to help these neighborhoods evolve into the future, thrive into the future, be sort of. It's corny, but become their best selves into the future um is a is going to be need to be a topic in the um upcoming comprehensive plan update. Um to me, this includes both what people generally use as examples of these, these sort of, I call them in my head. Vintage neighborhoods, sort of post-war sixty-seventies, that timeframe generally. Um but also anything up into, you know, the la- before the last forty years or so, sort of into the eighties, I would even put. Put some of these these areas. There are a lot of areas of South Burlington that were were developed in that timeframe um that either now have. Sort of been static for a long time and have some opportunity for for reinvestment or um. Uh adding features, adding some priority to really help them grow and thrive um into the future. But also maintaining unique features and unique character of some of these areas. So the twofold question that I wanted to bring to the planning commission today is. First, what what the planning commission's vision is for some of for these these types of neighborhoods into the future? What features do we want to prioritize? What, how do we see? Them moving forward? How do we see people living in those neighborhoods, you know, moving through the neighborhoods? Do you have additional um resources or services that are available? How, what does transportation look like to and through these neighborhoods? And then the the flip side and and. Possibly, probably the more important is how do we, how do we want to present? These questions to members of the public during our public outreach on the comprehensive plan. So I guess I just wanted to start with with what. If anyone had any initial reactions to what I wrote in the the memo, you know, what what do we need to be doing to be supporting these neighborhoods? What do we want them to look like into the future? What do you, what do you want um the comprehensive plan to be saying about? How the city is is addressing these neighborhoods? Yeah.
Well, I think I think the obvious question is, what do the neighborhoods want? In other words, rather than we saying, well, this is what you should have. Um, you know, to do a survey of each of the neighborhoods. There's a couple that jump out, of course, when you say in a connectivity, you certainly Country Club Estates is is out there. Exactly, and and Stonehouse as well, you know, we have, we've we've mentioned that before, but. Certainly connecting those in some capacity might make sense. Maybe they don't wanna be connected. Maybe they're real happy just being out of the fray and. Watching the F thirty-five score fifteen, I mean, um the other thing is Grandview jumps out. Um, you know, that's a very dense area and it probably screaming for. Multi-level buildings at some point, which would not, I don't think um. Damage the character of that neighborhood. Um, so I think that that one jumps out, but you know, places like Mayfair Park and the Orchards and so on, I mean. These I look at as just really prized neighborhoods and I I really wanna be cautious about. We feeling we should change the character of those neighborhoods. And what do we mean by character? So it's just a quick, quick shot. There's a lot, a lot I could say about it, but.
Yeah.
So one. Andrew and then Michael?
So Ted used the word character a couple of times, but that's that was kind of missing, I think, from your. Kelsey from the paragraph, which I think is not exactly sure what I mean, but there's something about character that probably. Certainly the folks in the neighborhood should be asked what they, what they think their character of a neighborhood, whether it's visual or what the homes look like and. Whether they like it or whether they wanna change it or that should be kind of part of it.
Yeah, so I just wanted, so the second. Uh, yeah, the second paragraph, I did paraphrase what the um twenty twenty-four vision and goals that the commission and the city council have adopted. Said, and one of them that's, I think, falls into this is. It does say preserving unique features while investing and enhancing and adapting existing neighborhoods. So. Then, and again, this is all paraphrased by me just to shorten and include. I think that's where some of the character falls is is some of this understanding that these existing neighborhoods do have unique. Unique features and features as a very broad word, not features being, you know, a particular historic building or something like that. Um, features being eh how the how the neighborhood looks and and feels. Um, but I think the flip side is also important to be considering as we're talking about this is is while. While in he- investing and enhancing and adapting these existing neighborhoods. I don't, I'm. I agree that that public outreach needs to be targeted to people who are living in these neighborhoods now. But I don't, I don't necess- I would, I would push back just a little bit on um. Wanting neighborhoods to remain static. So if if preserving character is. Leads to the logical end of nothing changes in the neighborhood, I'm not sure. If that's where the where, what's the statement the city wants to be making on on these places. But that's up to you. I might be completely off base.
Could you give me a just a quick read on how you change a neighborhood, let's say like Mayfair Park? Or point to one of these neighborhoods and you're immediate.
I I have a comment that relates to that, so.
Yeah, if you wanna go ahead, Monica, or either way.
I'm sorry, okay.
Do you wanna make your?
Well, I think I can, or well, mine, it's, I had a conversation with Kelsey that I like to tell you about, so but I think Michael was ahead of me.
Okay, Michael and then.
Hearing from these neighborhoods is is critical and uh because I think in in other. Parts of our work, we've always considered the context of uh an area or a neighborhood. But um if I were, take Mayfair Park and it's a similar development to. Where my children grew up, just outside Montreal. In in a square mile, we had at least five parks. Small pocket parks. In winter, the city council would put up their boards and fill it up flooded with water when it was cold enough. There was a skating rink in summer. It was uh some other kind of playground. These were half acre, maybe less. And that's, I think, something that's missing in in or in um Mayfair Park or uh. The Chamberlain District. Uh so that's those are the things we might ask. Is this something that is of interest to you? Um, and then from a planning, I mean, a town planning point of view, I think uh. When there's an opportunity for redevelopment, somebody's wants to. Um, redevelop the house or renovate it, uh we should try to get people to build. Multifamily duplexes at least, because that's where, that's how the cost comes down and the density increases to. What we want, what's what is it in the climate action plan, twelve point five units per acre? Those are just two, two things that that come to mind. Parks, and I know it's a hot button for. This guy. Bike paths, that's been taken care of probably, but in the old neighborhoods. You don't see much. If you, if you walk around um in Mayfair Park, uh there aren't many bike paths. But it's safe because it's off the main drag. So pocket parks. And multifamily when there's redevelopment are two things that come to mind.
Did you want Kelsey to reply?
No, I mean, I can, I think I can set it up that um similar to what you're you're saying about the duplexes. I could not separate this conversation from the importance of selling our TDRs and protecting our NRP. Now, I know we're not getting into TDRs tonight and that's not my intention. But since IZ, we've been saying, we're going to. Secure our NRP and build less in the SEQ and build more on the transit overlay district. The neighborhoods you all just discussed are in the transit overlay district. I think that this is where. The flowers hit the fan and we need to be straight up with people, because if we're not. If we're, if our intention is to build up in the transit overlay district, we may be looking at regulations that would say. A half a mile off of major roads like Williston and Shelburne should start to have a target of. A lot more density. And if we don't do that, then we're going to be looking at potentially, and this is where I asked Chelsea, I was asking Kelsey. Um, you know, what, where are all of these TDRs meant to go now? And it if they're truly limited to the R sevens and the R whatevers. Um, you're gonna be looking at extremely dense and a lot of, I don't know if you have those numbers. Uh just along your major corridors. The reality is that just may not happen. And so in order to secure the NRP. And have that permanently conserved, which I think everybody wants, the reality is. Because the TDRs aren't going to be going out to the SEQ, they're gonna have to come in in some way, and I think it may. Necessitate these neighborhoods being ready to look different. In order to save the natural resources that we've all, that we all want to save. So it's, it's a difficult. It's a difficult conversation and um I I couldn't separate, I couldn't talk about how chair, I come from. You know, the Laurel Hill neighborhood and. I love it and it has the character and it has the pocket park that everybody did use for all their Easter egg hunts and everything. But if we're not, if if we need those TDRs to come in because we wanna permanently conserve that that land. There may be some big changes to these neighborhoods. That we need to all be open to and I don't know how to, where to take that. So if there's anything you wanna add, uh Kelsey, but I just had a very difficult time separating um the conversation, you know?
No, I don't think I have anything to add about about that conversation. Um I will just just click quickly clarify with the. Expansion of the TDR receiving areas, um the current number, if with a one currently the one-to-one. You know, selling and receiving TDRs, we you would be able to absorb the TDRs. From the NRP in the current receiving areas, um which do include the R seven. In the transit overlay district, but not in the R force. Um so we did not expand the TDR program to. It is not currently expanded to the R force. It's not some, not that, not that it couldn't be expanded. To those areas as Monica was alluding to, but it is not, that's not where it is currently approved.
So it could be expanded into those areas.
The TDR permit, if if in the future you wanted to do that, you you could um do that.
To amend the ordinance.
Yes.
And I think then, I mean, Monica has a very powerful point. We should put that as a high priority on our. On our, what are we gonna call this? Bike rack or to-do list that we didn't get done? In my view, in this case, that we didn't get right in the first instance, but it's the best we could get with, you know. With the seven of us voting on it. It it is something that we should consider. Um, I don't know whether you had in mind, Monica, that if somebody has a single family. Dwelling and they want to make a duplex, they can get that extra. Dwelling in there by buying TDRs.
Do we need to tie TDRs to the conversation about what these neighborhoods would look like? Or what's appropriate for them to look like?
It wasn't, that wasn't my, it wasn't my intention to get into the specifics of that, but I do think the reality is. If we want to stick with the plan of conserving this land, this very important land, which was at least specifically the. The original NRP land and then we've added to it, so we've added TDRs. Um if we want to stick with that plan, that that's not permanently conserved land right now and the. It's not conserved until the TDRs are sold. And so if the mission is to stick with that. Forgetting then about TDRs, those other neighborhoods have to prepare to take in. Higher density. So I think it will naturally have to fit into what is the envisioned. New personality, character of those neighborhoods. It 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 can't not, we've never had to address that before, because. The density was elsewhere, but we're, we have decided that it's going here, so it's coming. And that that we have to be very upfront with the public about that. So.
I don't think we have decided that we're putting TDRs in our four neighborhoods. That's not a thing we've decided, so. That could be a future conversation, but we.
That's again TDR. I'm just saying all conversations have been more density going to the transit overlay district. That's where people want it. And and I don't know, that's not just Shelburne Road. That's, what is it, a quarter mile in from? The major roads, so that's. The major roads, so that's going into those neighborhoods. And yes, I know the TDRs don't necessarily go there, but the language has been. You know, transit overlay district, so it's, yeah.
Just to, just maybe to flush out the um, some of the TR stuff, and I, I know we're getting off track here, but. Um, do, do we know? Just correct my understanding, Paul, if it's a habitat block and NRP, at least under the regs, there, there really can't be anything, right?
Uh, so that area is only. Level. One resource, meaning uh, sorry, if it's a hazard, then it doesn't count as TDRs.
Right, that's not where I'm going. I, I want to go there second.
Habitat block, it can be sold as a TDR.
No, no, I know, but I thought that the regs don't permit any development, even the one or two, if it's habitat block and NRP.
Yes.
Right, so. But for, I guess, a future regulatory change, that, that stuff is effectively conserved by reg. Right? So it's really the. Areas that are non, that are both not NRP and habitat block. Useful to me, don't know how much there is of that stuff. And even within that stuff, we've also said if it's a wetland or other hazard. Um, you don't even get a TDR for that. And so I don't, I don't know if we've kind of recalculated, I guess, all the. The, the TDR needs based upon what we did in I Z, and it may be, may be a lot less. Than we thought there was when we, when we did the TDR committee. I think the, things have changed, would be interesting to understand what those changes are.
Okay, um, Paul?
Uh, I think that we have to devise some. To devise some mechanism to uh, ascertain what problems that uh, neighborhoods are having. I think we'd learn a lot from neighborhoods. By finding out what their problems are that usually are. Chronic and unspoken, usually I think the city doesn't know about them. So, for example, my neighborhood, Eastwoods. I don't think anybody knows what a problem we have with the rice traffic. You know, it's bumper to bumper at Proctor at seven forty-five every morning and. Same at two fifteen every afternoon on Meadow. Uh, we've got a one-way street that nobody's very happy with. That was an earlier solution to the problem. Um, and there's a couple of ways that the problem could be solved. Hadley could be extended up to Rice High School. Or the diocese could put a driveway in from their building to Rice High School off of Joy Drive. And both of those things would take most of the traffic out of our neighborhood. We've got a lot of young families that move into our neighborhood with little kids. And they're really, really concerned about the traffic and particularly teenage traffic. Um, and their kids, uh, you know, our neighborhood's kind of neighborhood where you can pretty much play in the street, you know? Um, but certainly not at seven forty-five or two fifteen, you know? So I'm just saying this as an example of one neighborhood, which if you talk to them. Would, would tell you this, would tell you something like this, you know? And I'm sure Mayfair Park and, you know, the various neighborhoods have similar problems. I know. This neighborhood over here is not happy at all with Mary Street and the potential for Mary Street ever opening up to Williston Road. I mean, that was fought. You know, vehemently, you know, ten years ago when we started developing city center. Uh, same thing with Ivy Street, you know, Ivy Street was really concerned about losing their. Character. And they lost it. I mean, the first thing that was built in city center were those, you know, those, I don't know what they are, they. Row houses or duplexes or whatever that are on Market Street. By Heinsberg Road, you know, and sure enough, all the trees are torn down and were cut down and. Housing went in and Ivy Street's great fear of city center just was the first thing that we did, you know, so. That's the approach I would take, is find out what people are really thinking and what their problems really are. Thanks.
Michael?
Just with the, the Chamberlain um, residents report that they made in two thousand twenty. Would that be a good template for us to see what kind of questions we might? Solicit from these neighborhoods? Um, yeah, because it may give us a.
Um, yes, though I would say that in the specific case, the Chamberlain neighborhood, there was a. Really big thing going on. That was the acquisition and removal of almost two hundred homes that is, you know, very, very central in everybody's mind and, and, and. Helped people to be very, very focused on issues in their neighborhood. I don't. I'm happy to say that's not easily replicable in that there is a, you know, existential. Loss of half of a neighborhood happening in most of the places.
No, I was just thinking that it might give us some ideas to.
Like, do you think, um, like, how would we? Ask neighborhoods, like, is it, like, do we want to come up with, like, some questions, like? Would you mind your neighbor's house becoming a duplex or um? Like something that's really like specific, that maybe we could like. Send out and individuals could reply to, because I don't know how we would like. Get a neighborhood's perspective, but I think we could ask questions and have individuals. Like reply, um, you know, or maybe something like. How would you feel if a corner store came into your neighborhood, you know? It would be something that's maybe not, you know, neighborhoods, but would be like a use change, like.
Accessory dwellings, infill, I mean, yeah, ask those questions of people.
Yeah, so Duncan?
No, I, I think that's, that's a great question. The infill conversation, I think Monica alluded to it too. Um, you know, in our, our one and our four neighborhoods where there is room for infill and accessory dwellings. I think that's something to present to people and say, hey, you know, are you, you know, we're thinking that to meet. This need. You know, that large yard that your neighbor has, if they want to put an accessory dwelling or no house there. Is that okay? Is that? What, that could change the character of the neighborhood, but it's a need.
So one thing that I um. I, I fray, I've sort of framed this discussion in a very particular way for particular reasons. I, I'm concerned that if you phrase that question as we need more housing. You get it because you have yards. It feels like an imposition, and it feels like we need housing and we're going to take it out of the SEQ. Where people live on larger lots and, you know, the perception is, is a little bit different. Um, and we're going to sort of forcefully put it into your neighborhood. That's a different. Approach than, than what I was trying to ask, which was how do we help? These neighborhoods, um. How do we help them survive and evolve over time? With things like, do we allow neighborhood scale commercial uses? How do? What kinds of bike paths or, or transit connections do you need in your neighborhood? And, and something that I've been thinking a lot about, um, is if you're, say, you live, say you bought your house in whichever neighborhood. In the eighties, and now you're older and you're living in a single family home. What are your options for, you know, having your, your adult children and their children come live? On your property, like, can you build a, a unit, another home in your backyard? Can you divide your home into a duplex? Some of these aging in place questions and multi-generational family questions and. Families don't necessarily look the same way that they do, they did, or were perceived to look when these neighborhoods were built. Um, so framing it instead of being. We have a citywide problem and our solution is to impose it on you, framing it more as. What, what is the, what flexibility do you, do you need in your neighborhood? What, what resources should, should be allowed that aren't currently allowed in your neighborhood? Um, how do we support our neighborhood schools with having a, a healthy student population, you know? Framing it as how do we build your neighborhood up? Um, and enhance it as opposed to how do we use you guys, how do we use your neighborhood to solve a, a, solve a problem? If that makes. There's a lot of words, I'm not sure. Start talking in circles too badly.
Um, so one thing that's fantastic about having Kelsey uh, join us now is that we can play good cop, bad cop. So I'm going to play bad cop to her good cop here and say, uh. From my perspective. You. As a city, I, I totally agree that listening to the neighborhoods is really important, and at the same time, there's some citywide goals. That are going to be really, really challenging to meet, you know, whether we're talking about the climate action plan, whether it's the fact that we know. That we're going to see a continued population growth of hundred and forty-ish homes per year. Um, we don't want them in greenfield areas, according to the planned work here. A lot of them are getting built in multifamily housing in fortyplexes, which is great for meeting a housing need, but it's. That's a type of housing. And as we think about, you know, how do we want to evolve? I'm wondering if some of the conversation can also be. Look at the lot sizes in a lot of our existing neighborhoods. They are much larger than. Lot sizes for single-family homes in Burlington, for instance. We're at ten, twelve thousand square feet. The form, the, uh, the TND that you adopted last year for single-family homes said five thousand square feet. Could a single family be converted into a duplex without dramatically change in the neighborhood? The paired part of that, and I think, um, you know, as part of a conversation of what would you like to potentially see in your neighborhood? I started scratching my head a little bit this summer, thinking, I wonder where there are duplexes already in the city. And there are a number of them in our neighborhoods that at some point in history we allowed. And then at some point in the last forty years, we disallowed, essentially. We said, it's four years, it's an acre, period. But if you'll give me. One minute here.
I think my neighborhood is two out of twenty, something like, I don't know the exact numbers, but.
So.
We've got a couple.
I was able to pull up um, data from the state's nine one one viewer. Um, so the pink here represent more than one house on a lot. So, you know, in some cases, it's a really big parcel like this one up here. But in a whole bunch of cases, you know, this is uh, Chamberlain School here. Whole bunch of duplexes across the street on the same type of lots, uh, Logwood neighborhood, whole bunch of them over there. Um, I'm gonna move over to Paul's neck of the woods. And Paul, you mentioned there's a, there's, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine of them that are duplexes. And.
What does purple mean? Does it mean two families are living?
It, it means that it's considered for the nine one one database to be more than one dwelling unit on a property, in a building. Uh, in a building is what it means. Um, you know, there's a few, oops, this thing's catching up to me, Crowdy Parkway here. A couple on Barrett Street over here. So, you know, as part of this conversation, I think, you know, I would encourage us to say. It, the perception is that it's a lot of single-family home neighborhoods, but it's not actually that. How much would it be acceptable to see some continued allowed evolution, um, to think about? You know, you've got a large house or a large lot. And, you know. The, the second half of my bad cop here is. Some of the things that we may hear from folks, like investment in parks, ability to walk to a corner store. Uh, better sidewalks and recreation paths will be pretty closely tied to, is there a?
Demand.
I, is there, is there a sufficient demand and tax base to pay for these things? Demand for the park to justify the cost, um, something that I think.
Or even economically support something like a corner store.
Right.
You're not going to be able to support a corner store if everybody is on a hundred foot wide. Lots.
So, you know, I'd love for some outreach to, to challenge some of these things and say, you know, what, what things would? What things would be beneficial in order to support the things that you're really interested in the neighborhoods? And then my last thing, um, and I think this speaks to Paul's comments uh, about the. Eastwood neighborhood is. Um, broadly speaking, my perception is that as a city that started as a small town that has grown into a city. A lot of our. Investment takes place in. Maintaining what we have, um, at the level that we have it and. Preparing for change. We have not really, we're, we're just sort of aging into the point in time. We're contemplating. Substantial reinvestment in places like J C Park or. Not, you know, medium-sized public works projects like what Paul's talking about on uh. Uh, in his neighborhood, there's not really a. Funding that goes towards how do we reinvest, how do we alter, how do we adapt places? And something like that being in the comprehensive plan could be really an interesting starting point to think about. A, as a policy direction, what does it mean to reinvest in places to adapt them to their future needs? So. There's my semi bad cop.
So can I give my um, comment? Really, this is coming from my marketing perspective. You have some amazing resources for free. Not only the city's outreach, but Front Porch Forum reaches so many people and within each of those Front Porch Forum groups, there are. Natural neighborhood captains that elevate, you know, and anyone could ask you, you know, who's the neighborhood know-it-all in your neighborhood? And they'll be able to tell you, and then you have somebody. Secondly. Asking the right questions is worth putting some money into and hiring somebody to create a survey that can get, because if, if. It, words matter and how you ask, and I think it would be a very good investment. This is very important work and it's going to be um. A big, there's big changes coming, so I think it's worth investing some kind of grant money or something to get this survey right. But as part of that, remember that just asking the questions. Will get people interested and alert to when, especially if the neighborhood. Know-it-alls, find out that there's a big discussion and they want to hear from your neighborhood. And then you will have people coming in, so that the survey. Is got, allowing you to gather information, but equally important, it's letting people know what you're talking about. And that will, and excite them, I think, to get involved, we can then. So it's getting the questions right will display your thinking. And encourage them to then get involved. It's not going to be the be all and end all.
So just two, two little pieces on that. First, um, we have been conceptualizing our um. Public outreach strategy, in my, at least in my head, in three, in three ways. One would be general citywide outreach. Those are. You know, planning commission, listening sessions, um, later on, sort of public hearings on the drafts and all of that. So that's the one thing, and that's the most traditional. Part of it. The second is exactly what you're saying with front, front porch forum, um, structuring neighborhood. It's not all the way down to like. Granular neighborhoods, but structuring. Um, some public outreach and um, public meetings around targeting to the different front porch forum sections. Um, I believe there are nine at this point in South Burlington. Um, and directing, you know, encouraging and advertising and over advertising, like, you know, this is, this is, you know, virtually and in person, like, here's an opportunity for. To discuss this area of the city and the concerns and the changes and, and updates to this area of the city. Um, and then the third is, is topically, so we're hoping to have. Some, if not all, of the um, other supporting policy committees kind of championing. Public outreach on their particular topics, so moving that into sort of the, you know, winter into the spring. About natural resources, about energy, about, you know, affordable housing and doing it that way. So those things are all um, in the works. I actually have a meeting with uh. Professional facilitators tomorrow to discuss some of this, um, and how to frame. Not, not necessarily framing the questions in a survey format, but how to even. Raise issues and discuss issues in these public open meeting um, opportunities. So that's just one thing along, along those lines.
So here's my, I guess, major ask as we're getting close to nine P M for tonight. We've heard a lot about um, wanting to hear from neighborhoods, hear their issues. Um, we've talked a little bit about some of the challenges faced in the city. At a broad sense, and we would obviously come back with a lot more specifics, but. Um, are you comfortable as a commission with? Uh, both reaching out to the neighborhoods and also presenting them with some of these challenging. Issues that come up against, that come up against one another, um, and, and really sort of, you know, pressing these subjects and, and, and not. Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, I, I, I would like us to be maybe just a little more direct, though, I mean, I, I, I understand how you want to frame it, Kelsey, and I. I appreciate the, the thoughtfulness, but some of these questions will potentially impact people. You know, and they, they, they should understand that. You know, and they 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 should understand that and and then they'll be thoughtful about their reply. So, I mean, for instance, we, I think we used the word thoughtful infill in the vision and goals and. We we should ask people what they think that means and what, I mean, we should.
Yep, yeah, the, my intention is not for these meetings to be like, hello, what, what would you like to talk about? In the grand universe of everything that impacts South Burlington, like. And that's part of what we're talking to facilitators about is how to raise some of these challenging subjects, how to address them, how to. How to ask members of the public in a way that is open-ended, but also um direct. And and that will get useful feedback, not that, not that all feedback isn't useful, but. Feedback that will answer some of these, these questions that that we'll be wrestling with, because there's always, I mean, we all know there's always. Pushes and pulls and you can very much care about five or six. Different issues, but at some point they have to be prioritized one over another. So these are things that will be. Working with facilitators to to do.
So I saw a lot of head nodding about, um, it's okay to ask some challenging questions. Um, you know, I think one of the hardest ones is. The subject of housing affordability, because um by definition, everyone who lives in a neighborhood has found it all. Um, but so their their relate, their their discussions about affordability is likely to be their child or their cousin or their. Their friend, and it's not them directly, but it is a massive issue. And so finding ways to sort of gently but firmly press the question and say. There's a housing crisis, how do, how 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 would you recommend that we meet it as as a city? Um, things like that, so.
Wouldn't those questions be coming up more at the live facilitated workshops more likely?
Yes.
It mentioned that Burlington had had um neighborhood councils, um, and. For Front Porch Forum doesn't coincide with these neighborhoods exactly, how would one go about? Uh, you you'd have to find some uh a leader in each, in each neighborhood and talk to them about creating. Um, a neighborhood council, which would be the body that we could interact with.
It was a um, just a quick thing, it was um administered by the Cito office and. And um what we had was neighborhood planning organizations, and I think we had six in the city. And um they were well attended, you know, some were less, but others were, you know. We had to close a couple of schools in the district that I was in, so that was pretty raucous and. I mean, to say you're closing down Adams School and then Taft School and it's like saying we're going to close down Chamberlain, I think might bring some folks out. But anyway, it was, it was really a good way, instead of what Monica's talking about as a, as a. It extends of what I was talking about, one person, it was a group, um, takes a little organizing. But it 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 was really a good way to transmit information and continue. I mean, it's been going on for thirty years or so, so.
Um, we have uh information technology like we've never had before. I mean, this is live television. And uh four people are watching us. Um, there could be hundreds of people watching us. You know, I mean, the winter in Vermont is a good time to stay home and turn on the TV and. Participate in writing the comprehensive plan, you know. Well, it could be, you know, I mean, it actually could be. I mean, but that's where you've got to talk to people about, we're wa- we're writing the comprehensive plan. I mean, that would come as news. First off, and then you can participate in writing the comprehensive plan. And this is how you can participate in writing the comprehensive plan, and they can be large meetings. I mean, we could fill up the auditorium and. You know, have a lot of people on and it's not chaos. I mean, you'll get a lot of really good ideas, actually, you know. You'd be surprised at what people know if you actually ask them, you know. Um, the other thing is I don't want to lose uh Michael's idea of using the um. Chamberlain Neighborhood Study as a template. Um, I really recommend that you get that out, dust it off, it's six years old now. And read it again, and you'll be surprised, really surprised at all the fairly ordinary, regular things in there. You know, it's not the airport, it's, you know, can we please have some flowers at the end of, you know, Patrick Street or something like that? You know what I mean? It's not, and none of it's been done, absolutely none of it. It's amazing to read through that. These simple suggestions and nothing has been done. So I really want us to get that out and. You know, somebody did that, somebody asked that neighborhood those questions. And a lot of them, like I said, are not the great questions of, you know. Airports and, you know, mass transit and blah, 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 you know, it's just a lot of is very plain. Our neighborhood be a lot nicer with more flowers kind of thing, you know.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Alright.
Anything we, is anything else on this? Okay, we had um added other business, uh possibly appointing someone from our group. To the Climate Action Transportation. Action Plan.
Advisory group. We're gonna come up with a fantastic acronym for it. It's gonna be great.
Maybe you should say what it's for.
So, uh, as you all know, the city council adopted the Climate Action Plan. It has uh major sectors. Uh, transportation and land use, uh buildings and thermal, um, smaller ones, and then and then one for us, there's government operations. City manager is going to be forming a advisory group to uh to provide. Um, feedback to the consultants that we're hiring in these different areas to. How to implement and it'll be across, the advisory group's going to be about ten people, it'll include some volunteers, some subject area experts. Uh, some areas, some people that can speak to uh underrepresented populations, so really a lot of different viewpoints. And so the city manager has invited for the first one, uh, which is transportation that is funded. To have um a representative from four of the city committees, all the committees that were on the Climate Action Group. Um, so, okay, they're likely to meet four times, uh, the advisory group between now and the late spring. Um, to give some feedback and direction, so.
Um, Andrew, you're interested? I guess Paul just says like, just so we understand the whole scope, so you said there's going to be multiple climate action.
Ultimately, there will likely be three implementation plans, government operations, uh. Buildings and thermal and transportation and land use. Those are the big, those are the two big ones, and then the one that we have direct control over, which is municipal operations.
So just so, do you anticipate that maybe our group would also have someone on of one? Like some of those other ones too, like, do we need to kind of anticipate? Like maybe Andrew, who just said he's interested, might be more interested in being on the one related to land.
The government operations one, um, we have not, the city manager is not, we've not discussed the form, but it's possible that there would be a representative from the planning commission on that one. I would guess that the buildings and thermal probably won't happen in the next, say, five months. It's not funded and in the meantime, several of the key actions are already moving forward uh directly with councils, so it's, yeah.
Okay, so not likely to have overlap with.
Possibly with the municipal.
Just so we knew.
So there will, did I hear you saying there will be um members of the advisory committee? W- will will be people who have served on the Climate Action.
Right, so there's likely to be about ten people on the advisory group, uh, ten to twelve, uh, that would be. One from each of the committees that served on the uh Climate Action Group. They can appoint somebody different. But it would be from those same committees, so Bike Pad, Energy, uh, uh, yourselves and. Somebody whose name is not.
Yeah, I'm just.
Subjectary experts like Green Mountain Transit and Green Mountain Power, and then a couple of groups that can speak to uh. Sort of population needs like the um, uh, the Interfaith Action Coalition. Um, as somebody who can speak to um some uh u- user needs that we're maybe not hearing from otherwise.
Well, I asked just to be sure that there'll be somebody there to see that we don't go off the rails, that we're. That the implementation follows what the the plan that the council has adopted.
Well, and that's, I mean, that's what what the city manager presented to the council was, the direction has been provided. Now it's about how do we implement it? So, so, yes, fair point, but the city manager's been very clear, this is an implementation plan, not a. Not a, you know, reevaluate plan.
Um, okay, well, is there anyone else who might be interested also? I feel like they might have time and or interest.
Monica's replacement, maybe, you know, we should. Maybe is that one of the criteria of joining?
Well, um, we do have one member who's interested, and I think that Andrew could probably keep the group on the rails. Um, with the work you've already done on the initial committee, so. Um, any other thoughts? Okay, do we need a motion to, is this something official?
Uh, you can either do it by motion or as chair, you can, you can lower your sword to his ear, however, however you'd like to do it.
And I get to appoint someone.
Lower your cash.
Okay, I appoint Andrew. After deliberation. Um, okay, so anything else? We are adjourned. Oh, no, we don't have minutes to.
Yes, we do. Yep.
Oh, geez, okay, I take back my adjourn.
Planning Commission section of the minutes of the joint planning commission council meeting of September the twenty seventh. And the Planning Commission minutes thirteen.
And I have a change in in October twenty fifth. It's in the six, uh, number six paragraph. And a very bear- embarrassing, uh. Said Mr. Trombley said that this proposal is locking in impervious surfaces by bending over for Tesla. Well, I reached out to Mr. Trombley and I was very disturbed by that comment, and as it turned out, he suggested I listen to the minutes. And that's not what he said. Uh, that bending over backwards, so there's a real difference between those two, and I, I'm embarrassed to have. Reached out to him without listening, so I'm, I hope whoever's taking the minutes is a little care, more careful on those.
Uh, but he also said we were tone deaf, which doesn't appear in the minutes.
True, but but this.
Ted wasn't disputing that.
That wasn't, uh, it was, I was referencing that and I looked at it, uh, read it and I was, you know, anyway, so that should be. That should not say bending over, bend over backwards.
Okay, any other um suggested edits to the minutes? Okay, do you have a second? I'll second. Any other discussion? Okay, on favor, I, that is unanimous. Now we can adjourn. Yes, sorry, I was going by the the part.
Can I just once say one thing?
Oh, yes, Helen.
I I I just wanted to commend you on your conversation. I mean, I I think it reflects. Many of the um issues that the council needs to grapple with, and I'm glad that. You'll be looking at the neighborhoods in the comprehensive plan. Um, as well as some of the additional, um, maybe amendments or changes to the energy. You know, what could be the energy code, so I applaud your work. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, hon.